... be held on Thursday, December 11th and which will be held in the William Tenet High School Cafeteria at 7:00 PM. Our music department also performed with the Wormster Symphony Orchestra on December 6th and the performance went very smoothly and we are very proud of our entire choir. Also on December 6th, Breakfast with Santa was held by the FBLA. The event was fully run by students and they had a great turnout. Families and friends came to enjoy fun games, music, face painting, and cookie decorating among other fun activities. William Tenet has also introduced a new two-factor authentication system on ClassLink in which students select an image to prove their identity. And this new feature will now protect against hacks and phishing to keep student data more secure. On December 20th, the senior class is holding a craft fair from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM in the William Tenet Cafeteria. And all proceeds will benefit the senior class Disney trip in April. The fair will include vendors, music, food, and more. Furthermore, on December 23rd, the school will be hosting the annual polar slip and slide to bring students together and kicking off the beginning of winter break, which is December 23rd through January 2nd. I thank you all for having me and I hope you have a happy holiday season.
Thank you.
Hello, you all don't know me yet, but my name is Elizabeth Peterson. I'm a junior at William Tenet High School. I'm also proud to be a Level 200 student at Networking and Operating System Security Program at Middle Buck's Institute of Technology. For our MBIT December Student Report, registration is now officially open at MBIT's Adult Education Spring Classes. For more than 40 years, this program has provided flexible, affordable, and up-to-date career technical training for adult learners. A full list of courses and online registration is available at MBIT.org, our website. Next, MBIT PBA Student Chapter is proud to host a holiday toy drive. And we're inviting each classroom to support the meaningful initiative. We kindly ask for the donation of one new unwrapped toy suitable for a child between the ages of nine and 15. All collected toys will be delivered to the North Penn Boys and Girls Club, an organization that provides essential services and support for more than 4,000 families in need throughout our community. Your contribution will help ensure that local children experience joy, encouragement, and a sense of belonging during this holiday season. Next, congratulations to our Automotive Technology Level 300 seniors on earning their ASC refrigerant recovery and recycling EPA 609 certification. This nationally recognized credential highlights their expertise in refrigerant handling, environmental safety, and AC system servicing. Key skills for today's automotive workforce. Their achievement reflects dedication, technical ability, and strong career focus. Next up, if you know somebody interested in attending MBIT, our applications for the 26-27 school year are now currently open. Perspective students are encouraged to apply online through the MBIT website. Next, the National Technical Honor Society members alongside students and staff from all of our 21 programs have organized a very successful month-long food drive to support families facing food insecurity. After collecting and organizing donations, students delivered the items directly to the Doylestown Food Bank. This effort showcased leadership, service, and a deep commitment to community impact. Finally, the Skills USA Fall Leadership Conference was an incredible success. Thirty MBIT students attended at Kalahari Resorts in the Poconos and represented our school with pride and excellence. Their achievements include first-place Spirit Award, first-place gold medal in poster design, and a third-place bronze medal in pin design. And that concludes my report, so thank you for staying connected with all of the exciting updates from Middle Buck's Institute of Technology. Follow us on social media for more achievements, events, and behind-the-scenes moments from across our programs.
Well done. Okay, moving right along, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mrs. Crossen. Good evening, everyone. First, I would like to put in a plug for our Centennial Food Bank housed at McDonald Elementary. This is a time of year where that food bank can become quickly depleted and so just putting it out there for anyone at any point in time if you want to drop off donations and help us to support an incredible cause, it is much appreciated. So, thank you. Secondly, tonight, I have asked Mr. Greenwood to present to you some preliminary thoughts regarding our budget and as we enter into budgeting season. And tonight, Mr. Greenwood is not going to give you necessarily the answers and the solution, but we are going to share with the board per the board's request. And I want to draw back to some conversations that we had earlier in the fall. After the budget was passed by the Board of Education earlier in the summer, one of the challenges facing our district and a challenge that is facing many districts because school districts, of course, are not immune to some of the economic factors that are going on in our country. And with the rate of inflation and the cost of goods and services, tariffs, there are, of course, many, many factors at play. But we are facing a deficit and we know this. And one of our goals, among many, is to do everything in our power to reduce that deficit and at the same time continue to deliver the high-quality services and supports and education that our students and our families deserve. And so, Mr. Greenwood is going to come up right now. He's going to share a little bit about where we are, some of the factors that are influencing and that we're facing, and then some of the points of entry that we're going to be looking at and examining and asking our administrative teams and also you as a Board of Directors for your expertise and guidance and help as we work together as a team to address this issue head-on and come up with solutions that are in the best interest of our families and most importantly, our students. So, Mr. Greenwood, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Lucabon. Here comes the slide. It feels like it was just yesterday we were talking about the budgets and here we are.
Be held on Thursday, December 11th and which will be held in the William Tenet High School cafeteria at 7:00 PM. Our music department also performed with the Wormster Symphony Orchestra on December 6th and the performance went very smoothly and smoothly and we are very proud of our entire choir. Also on December 6th, Breakfast with Santa was held by the FBLA. The event was fully run by students and they had a great turnout. Families and friends came to enjoy fun games, music, face painting, and cookie decorating, among other fun activities. William Tenet has also introduced a new two-factor authentication system on ClassLink in which students select an image to prove their identity. And this new feature will now protect against hacks and phishing to keep student data more secure. On December 20th, the senior class is holding a craft fair from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM in the William Tenet cafeteria. And all proceeds will benefit the senior class Disney trip in April. The fair will include vendors, music, food, and more. Furthermore, on December 23rd, the school will be hosting the annual Polar Slip and Slide to bring students together and kicking off the beginning of winter break, which is December 23rd through January 2nd. I thank you all for having me and I hope you have a happy holiday season.
Thank you.
Hello, you all don't know me yet, but my name, my name is Elizabeth Peterson. I'm a junior at William Tenet High School. I'm also proud to be a Level 200 student at Networking and Operating System Security Program at Middle Bucks Institute of Technology. For our MBIT December Student Report, registration is now officially open at MBIT's Adult Education Spring Classes. For more than 40 years, this program has provided flexible, affordable, and up-to-date career technical training for adult learners. A full list of courses and online registration is available at MBIT.org, our website. Next, MBIT PBA Student Chapter is proud to host a Holiday Toy Drive. And we're inviting each classroom to support the meaningful initiative. We kindly ask for the donation of one new unwrapped toy suitable for a child between the ages of nine and 15. All collected toys will be delivered to the North Penn Boys and Girls Club, an organization that provides essential services and support for more than 4,000 families in need throughout our community. Your contribution will help each, will help ensure that local children experience joy, encouragement, and a sense of belonging during this holiday season. Next, congratulations to our Automotive Technology Level 300 seniors on earning their ASC Refrigerant Recovery and Recycling EPA 609 certification. This nationally-recognized credential highlights their expertise in refrigerant handling, environmental safety, and AC system servicing. Key skills for today's automotive workforce. Their achievement reflects dedication, technical ability, and strong career focus. Next up, if you know somebody interested in attending MBIT, our applications for the 26, 27 school year are now currently open. Perspective students are encouraged to apply online through the MBIT website. Next, the National Technical Honor Society members alongside students and staff from all of our 21 programs have organized a very successful month-long food drive to support families facing food insecurity. After collecting and organizing donations, students, students delivered the items directly to the Doylestown Food Bank. This effort showcased leadership, service, and a deep commitment to the, to community impact. Finally, the Skills USA Fall Leadership Conference was an incredible success. Thirty MBIT students attended at Kalahari Resorts in the Poconos and represented our school with pride and excellence. Their achievements include first-place Spirit Award, a first-place gold medal in poster design, and a third-place bronze medal in pin design. And that concludes my report, so thank you for staying connected with all of the exciting updates from Middle Bucks Institute of Technology. Follow us on social media for more achievements, events, and behind-the-scenes moments from across our programs.
Well done. Okay, moving right along, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mrs. Crossen. Good evening, everyone. First, I would like to put in a plug for our Centennial Food Bank housed at McDonald Elementary. This is a time of year where that food bank can become quickly depleted and so just putting it out there for anyone at any point in time, if you want to drop off donations and help us to support an incredible cause, it is much appreciated. So, thank you. Secondly, tonight, I have asked Mr. Greenwood to present to you some preliminary thoughts regarding our budget and as we enter into budgeting season. And tonight, Mr. Greenwood is not going to give you necessarily the answers and the solution, but we are going to share with the board per the board's request. And I want to draw back to some conversations that we had earlier in the fall. After the budget was passed by the Board of Education earlier in the summer, one of the challenges facing our district and a challenge that is facing many districts because school districts, of course, are not immune to some of the economic factors that are going on in our country. And with the rate of inflation and the cost of goods and services, tariffs, there are, of course, many, many factors at play. But we are facing a deficit and we know this. And one of our goals, among many, is to do everything in our power to reduce that deficit and at the same time continue to deliver the high-quality services and supports and education that our students and our families deserve. And so, Mr. Greenwood is going to come up right now. He's going to share a little bit about where we are, some of the factors that are influencing that we're facing, and then some of the points of entry that we're going to be looking at and examining and asking our administrative teams and also you as a Board of Directors for your expertise and guidance and help as we work together as a team to address this issue head-on and come up with solutions that are in the best interest of our families and most importantly, our students. So, Mr. Greenwood, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Lucaba. Here comes the slide. It feels like it was just yesterday we were talking about the budgets and, and here we are again. So, with great joy and a little trepidation, I, don't get me wrong, I think we have a lot going on, right? There's a lot of, a lot of challenges, all right, that we will, we will speak to. But I think we are committed to, to finding a way through that, right? While keeping education and what's in the best interest of our students still is our North Star. So, we will, we will jump right in. We did in November, the committee of the whole meeting in November, the board did approve a schedule that we will work towards as well. These are just our norms. And this first slide sort of looks at where we are, right? The Act One was published and committed in the end of September. The Act One increase is 3.5%. To Centennial, that's worth about three point, just over $3.4 million, right, at the full number. Okay? We looked at labor contracts, right? So, we have three labor contracts that we've talked about over the, over the years. The collective bargaining agreement with our Centennial Education Association, right? The increase changed year over year from last year to, to the next year will be $2.3 million. Okay? The Act 93 agreement that was passed, just this past May-June timeframe, and we did that a couple of times, that's worth an additional $164,000, okay? Sorry if the math, I got a little too geeky on my, my decimal points, but so point 164 million is $164,000, right? And the support staff, we're just getting that underway, those discussions underway. We'd anticipate a potential cost increase of $557,000. Okay, so if we add those up, those agreements, they come to an increase of $3 million, right? Just over $3 million. And, and equates to in itself an increase of 3.1% of an Act One increase, right? As we've talked about, and then that leaves the balance, right? The balance after that is just under $400,000. That's 3.4 less the $3,022,000 gives us that three point, or 392,000, which is the balance. It's important to, to, to keep in mind, so those costs include the district's Peasars contribution and payroll tax such as FICA that, that school districts and companies all pay at the net, right? So, we do get a recovery from the state for those, so this, those numbers that are shared here include Peasars net of the reimbursement. What it doesn't include, it doesn't include any other benefits, right? Healthcare benefits, healthcare charges, you know, there's a lot of pressure certainly in that market. We did a lot of work, we tried to do a lot of work in the, in the earlier agreements around healthcare, trying to identify prescription drugs and how we can better manage those. But those numbers aren't included in the numbers that we're looking at right here. So, that's, that's sort of the gist of the slide. The dollar bill sign really just is, is a demonstration, right? It's a visual for where the money goes, right? So, 72% of our, every dollar that comes to the district goes to instruction and student services. 6%, which is that green slice, is administrative costs. 14% is focused on operations, 1% in student activities, and 7% in debt service, right? That number's actually been coming down if we followed the dollar, the bouncing dollar from year to year. That number will have come down as we have done those refinancings over the past, past year or two. Okay? Any questions? This slide sheet here is, is just our, our standard issue Act One slide, right? So, the orange line indicates the budget increase, the blue line represents the Act One index. For the past six years, the district has approved budgets below the Act One. Following seven years where it was above the Act One. The Independent Fiscal Office, the IFO, came out with a new projection a week ago. It looked out another four years to 2030, '31, FY '31. As you can see, that Act One continues to drop and at 20, at FY '31, as in Act One, they're projecting the Act, Act One increase of 3.1%. Right, that would be less than the $3 million. So, as we're looking at things and we're looking long-term, which was what we were asked to do, right? Let's say that's going to be a competing challenge, the district's ability to manage within that, right? Because the amount of money we can raise if we took the full Act One will continue to get, continue to decline over that period of time. The other component, obviously, to, to the Act One is the assessed value, right? Because that's, that's the math that goes on, right? Over the past three years, our assessed value has ranged between $565 million and $566 million. You could see sort of the ramp-up coming out of COVID as assessments grew and values grew. And the blue is the projected, that's utilizing the Bucks County's November 1st estimate. We'll get another estimate in January and we'll continue to watch that number. When the number drops as it did in '25, '26, right, that, that takes away revenue from the district. It reduces, doesn't take it away, it just reduces the impact of that real estate, those real estate taxes. So, that's another component we need to continue to keep our eye on. We continue to work with attorneys in managing those assessment challenges and making sure that we're trying to do everything we can to minimize that reduction. We did have a very successful assessment challenge with the Tesla building, right? That went from a vacant property into the, the building it is now. And that was a very positive impact on the assessment numbers. I'm never sure when they hit, to be honest with you, so that went through in the late summer, that change happened. So, I'm not sure if it's in the November report yet, but we'll continue to look at that and I'll get an answer for you with that regard. Questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes?
Yes. Very first meeting that Dr. Lucaba had, he said we could collect millions, thousands plus on students who enrolled in our district, but their home districts are not paying their fair share. Where are we on that plan and how much have we collected so far?
I think we are, we have looked at, so I'm assuming you're referring to the 1306s that were, that, that were discussed, right? I think we are over $300,000 in billed services, right? Our team had pulled together. We spent a lot of time with Gina coming out over the summer. We worked with Michelle Bousseti as well as Josie in student services and came up with a very attentive plan to make sure that we, it's a very complicated process. It takes a lot of time in searching to make sure we're able to identify the students and that their district agrees that their, their students. That, you know, that, that comes at, at an effort. But we have, we've accumulated, I think, just over $300,000 in billing for those. So, those, those are, pardon me? If, if the team in the room can turn up the, they can't, okay, okay. Pardon me?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Where did you collect the $300,000 from?
That money comes from students who are in our district for points of time, right? These students aren't students who come and spend the year necessarily with us. They're students who come in and out of the district, some for days, some for months. But it is, they, some come in for a couple of days, they leave, they come back. So, it is, it is a very sort of meticulous process to continue to track them and to do that. What, who pays that is your question, and their home district, which is the key to the process, is getting their home district to acknowledge that student as one of their own. So, it is not our district, but it would be our district collecting money from Council Rock, if you will, or from Ben Salem.
And I can, can you hear me, Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
So, ju- just a little bit of, of an overview. So, we bill using the Pennsylvania Department of Ed 4605 form and not to get too deeply into the weeds, but we complete and submit that Pennsylvania PDE 4605 form to notify the home district of its financial responsibility for the student who resides in, in our home district here in Centennial. If that home district does not respond within the required timeframe, that responsibility is then assumed by the home district to pay for that. And so, sometimes we are at the beck and call of that district. And to Mr. Greenwood's point, it, it's a bit of a, of a tedious process because we have to wait to hear back from those home districts where that student typically resides. And so, that does take some time to recoup that. Then we have to regularly bill the, the home district for all of that. And that's for tuition. If the student is receiving special education services, there are, are far more fees that we have to recoup during that process. And we have to ensure that we've, we've gathered all that information as well and appropriately doing that. And that can be special education, it could be charges from our intermediate unit at the Bucks County, it could be transportation. So, there are a whole host of things that we have to look at. And then, if they don't pay, sometimes too, the state will hold subsidies from non-paying districts until they reimburse us here in Centennial. So, the billing essentially protects taxpayers from covering costs for non-resident students. And the PDE form establishes clear responsibility for who has to pay. So, it's a really, I feel like I'm getting into the weeds, but it's, it's a, it's a very complex process that takes a lot of time and attention. I will say that Mr. Greenwood and Mrs. Bousseti and our special education team have been really diligent in diving into this. And I think that we will continue to recoup money that, that is due to us over time. And we'll continue to work that to get every dollar that's owed to us. Did I answer your question okay?
You answered my question, but I have a follow-up question. You said that, that, you said at your first meeting, we would collect thousands of dollars. Is that a possibility or is that just something we think we could, might, or maybe not?
Typically, if we do this properly and we have our process in place and we are diligent in, in the accounting aspect of it, I do believe that we could very easily collect hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. Yes.
Well, that sounds very encouraging and I can't wait to say your business.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. This is just a, a quick look at, at where we ended up last July with the, the budget and a 3.75% increase. Total revenue of $151,676,000. Expenses equal to $156,447,000 and a $4.7 million deficit. The expenses in that come from the following object codes. So, within the accounting world, within school districts, there's a structured chart of accounts so that we can all compare ourselves to one another. The object code is one of those tools, one of those groupings that we look at. And each one of these squares represents a different object code number and then they break down inside of those numbers. Salaries and benefits, those two combined equal 70% of our total expenses, right? 70% of the total expenses of the current year budget are found in, in that salaries pie square and the benefits pie square, right? Debt service, right, which is really a non-negotiable, right? We were sort of under contract to do that. That equals 7%, right? And is, is identified by those top two, the top blue, other financings of $5.7 million, which is the principal payments on that debt service. And then that yellow piece of pie next to it, other objects, that's the interest on those bonds. Okay, so collectively, those two represent our debt service. The next largest grouping of expenses is purchase services. So, that is sort of a vast grouping of expenses. It includes services that we buy from the intermediate unit for special education. It includes charter school tuitions, it includes MBIT payments. Technology services, outside transportation services, and utilities get locked in there. So, those are a number of the, of the key items that make up that section. Supplies and property, we're looking at, you know, 3% and 1% respectively. Not that we don't continue to work that, but I think we need to really begin to look at the other half of that pie and figure out how we're going to make, make inroads in ways to be able to reduce our overall costs. This slide looks at comparisons to the other schools in Bucks County, our neighboring schools. The group on the left looks at total expenses, so each school reports annually to the state. This is pulling that information from the state's record, so this is '23, '24. So, they lag a year behind as, as school districts submit the information. That information is due by November, December to the state. And then the following year, they'll be, they're able to report it. So, in '23, '24, Centennial, looking at total expenses compared to students, we were, you know, in the, we were number eight in comparison. One being the most expensive, 13 being the, the least expensive per student on a per-student basis. It's not always the exact science, but it is a meaningful, it's, it's a knowledgeable metric, right? It's a usable metric, I think. You know, there is a grouping certainly of those school districts around us, right? There's not much difference between Bristol Centennial and Bristol Township. It's $27,300, $26,900, and $26,400. That's a pretty tight group, but we're in the bottom half, right? So, as we look at our total expenses against our students. The group, the chart on the right looks at special education and looks at special education expenses, which is a function code, 1,200 grouping, right? So, all of our expenses towards special education, again, against that same column of total actual expenses. And then the percentage, right? And as a percent of special education, Centennial's eighth again. We were the eighth in that list with 18.73% of our special ed, made up 18.73% of our total expenses in '23, '24. The part that we need to begin to think about is what is happening next, right? In 20, in FY '25, the next year, that number moves from 18.7% of our expenses to 21.5% of our expenses, okay?
So those are a number of the, of the key items that make up that section. Supplies and property, we're looking at, you know, 3% and 1% respectively. Not that we don't continue to work that, but I think we need to really begin to look at the other half of that pie and figure out how we're going to make, make inroads in ways to be able to reduce our overall costs. This slide looks at comparisons to the other schools in Bucks County, our neighboring schools. The group on the left looks at total expenses. So each school reports annually to the state. This is pulling that information from the state's record, so this is 23, 24. So they lag a year behind as, as school districts submit the information. That information is due by November, December to the state, and then the following year they'll be, they're able to report it. So in 23, 24, Centennial, looking at total expenses compared to students, we were, you know, in the, we were number eight in comparison. One being the most expensive, 13 being the, the least expensive per student, on a per student basis. It's not always the exact science, but it is a meaningful, it's, it's a knowledgeable metric, right? It's a usable metric, I think. You know, there is a grouping certainly of those school districts around us, right? There's not much difference between Bristol Centennial and Bristol Township at 27,300, 26,900, and 26,400. That's a pretty tight group. But we're in the bottom half, right? So as we look at our total expenses against our students. The group, the chart on the right looks at special education, and looks at special education expenses, which is a function code, 1,200 grouping, right? So all of our expenses towards special education, again, against that same column of total actual expenses. And then the percentage, right? And as a percent of special education, Centennial's eighth again. We were the eighth in that list with 18.73% of our special ed, made up 18.73% of our total expenses in 23, 24. The part that we need to begin to think about is what is happening next, right? In 20, in FY '25, the next year, that number moves from 18.7% of our expenses to 21.5% of our expenses, okay? In our 20, uh, '25, '26 budget, that number moves to 22.4% of our budget. So it is a growing section within our overall expenses. Okay? I'll just keep rolling. This looks at our enrollment. This is a slide we've shared, and we share the updates as we've seen them. Over the past, you know, five years, right, economically disadvantaged students in the district have grown 10% and continue to grow, right? It's up at 50% of our group economically, or identified as low-income, economically disadvantaged. Our special education group continues to grow as well, as do our EL students over this period of time. And, you know, the, there are mandated support, mandated services that are required by the state to be offered to these students, and we need to make sure that we are able to continue to do that. In looking at special education, this chart shows both the state and federal support for special education at the district. That is, those, those numbers are measured by the gray bars coming from left to right. As you can see, that number doesn't change much, right, if at all. Over the past 10 years, so we've seen this chart in a longer period of time, I tried to condense it a little, looking at, at a 10-year window, right? Over the past 10 years, state and federal support for special education has increased 7.4% or $320,000, $320,000. That's less than 1% per year, right, over that 10-year window, 7.4%. Our expenses as a district in that same period have grown 60%, right? Or $10 million, over $10 million, right, to $27.2 million. The 25 actual expenses, right, so this takes, take, uh, excuse me, this takes us through 2024 on the bar chart. Our 2025 actual expenses went from 27.2 to 32.3, an increase of over 18.8%, right? So that's what this chart tries to show. The numbers on the end of the bar is the difference between the support from the state and the actual. The number on the bottom is representing the total expenses for that, and, and shows the revenue at the same level. Okay?
I have a question.
Yes.
The way you do the exercise for kids that are coming into the district, is that same exercise done in terms of the state and federal funding? If you have a student who's coming from Central Bucks and you get the money for them, whatever percentage from the district to cover them, you, do you also try to claim the state and federal funding for, from them for those students that have come here?
It doesn't work necessarily that way, right? We don't, we don't, unfortunately, right, we, we are limited in, in, in the budget process, right? IDEA was a, a federal program, right, that was supposed to continue to grow. Our revenue for IDEA was $1.2 million when I arrived at Centennial in 2019. It's $1.2 million as I stand here before you, right? It hasn't changed a wink. You know, special education, as we, as shared in, in the weekly update of late, right? So Harrisburg, it took a little longer than us to get their budget done, but they did get it done thankfully, and they very quickly came up with the cash, which I was greatly appreciative of. But the amount of money I think changed was in the thousands of dollars that the district received in the form of special education funding from the state, right? The state, the federal government does not maintain that pace, right? And that's not a poor Centennial issue, right? That is a nationwide issue. That is a challenge that every district faces, right? We all, you know, we gather in small groups and we pat each other on the back and, and wonder what's happening, right? But the escalation of special education needs grows, and, and the state and/or federal government is not following that. So while I wish, Mrs. Krieger, there was a balance to that, that doesn't, doesn't, they don't tie that way. They track our special education population, right? Our number didn't go down, which sometimes happens, right? So on the state side, there's a basic ed number, basic ed funding. We call it BEF, and there's a special ed funding, SEF. Those two numbers are what we looked at, what was reported out. Our share coming out of Harrisburg, I think our net gain compared to the budget was, you know, literally a couple of thousand dollars. The big bump for us came in the form of block grants that everyone got different, different amounts of money. The districts that got nothing got $50,000. So we were among the districts that got nothing and we got $50,000.
We literally lost money from investment income compared to what we got in an increase.
That's, that's probably very accurate. You've been claiming that since, since the beginning.
Since the inception.
I appreciate it.
That we literally lost money on this deal.
Right.
Yeah. And if I may, another big stressor too is that in its original form, IDEA promised to fund approximately 40% of special education costs. We hover around 10 to 12%. And so that's been an on, and not just Centennial, nationally. And so that's been another huge stressor on districts.
I'd say, and keeping in mind that as inflation goes up, the amount that we got stayed the same, so we actually lost it on both sides.
It's a Mr. Miller quote, right out, right out of the annals of Centennial lore.
Yep.
Right? Those are all true, right? And those gray boxes include, right, not only the state funding in SEF, but IDEA. Those are the two big totals that make up that, that state number. So we're coming towards the, the end of a couple of more slides to go. It's just we, we sort of put in front of us things that we have historically worked on to try to close the gap. We've, we've worked on various retirement incentives within the Education Association, adding additional sick days to what we would pay out. I think we've had some success over the years in doing that. The debt service refinancing, I think that continues to be, to be valuable. I think we've saved significant money over the long term, exceeding $5 million, which I think is very beneficial. We've done deferred technology refreshes. So we've been on a cycle within leasing the equipment, and we held on to it and kept it an extra year to try to delay that process. That was another attempt that we did, although that's really a ti- a place in time, right? It works once, but you cannot continual, continually defer the technology refresh. We've always looked at, at school and department-level expense reductions, staffing reorganizations and, and ways we can try to do things better. And certainly the success of our Centennial Virtual Learning Academy, right, CVLA versus if those students went to a charter school and how that would differ, right? So I think we, while I think there is savings, I think that's more cost avoidance, right? We're, we're not getting charged that, that expense. And then over the, over, you know, since, since September, we've been having these discussions. We met with Mr. Hartline. We've met with the Finance Committee to talk about the board's request and how we can work to, to try to eliminate that deficit. And in those, in those discussions, this goal sort of bubbled up to the top. I think it took a couple of, a couple of rounds. But this, or certainly our goal is to ensure fiscal responsibility through a comprehensive examination of district expenditures and aligning those financial resources with strategic priorities that advance high-quality student outcomes with a focus on efficiency, right? I think that's the, that's our goal, right? And how we can align our comprehensive plan that we are ending and the new comprehensive plan that we are building to make sure that it is able to do those kind of things, right? Because that's why we're all in the room, to, to continue the success that we've seen, right, over the last reports. And our, our good friend Joe Rutz down there, he can use another slideshow in his pocket if you need to see it, right? The ability to deliver those results has been fantastic, right? We've had years of, of good growth. We're seeing academic achievement on its heels, so that's all good stuff. The ideas that we have, we have been bouncing around, you know, sort of looking again with fresh eyes, scheduling and staffing efficiencies, right? How do retirements play into that? How do, how do we make those things come together? I think that we looked at out-of-district placements, and I know Dr. Lukow, I wanted to speak towards that. And I think that just is a, a jump before you start, right? And when we say that, I think it's anyone that's out of the district, right? So it's charter students. I mean, we get charter students back into our schools, right? Special ed students. You have, you have regular ed students that have behavioral challenges, right? And they get, they get, you know, outplaced. So I think those are some of the things that we're looking at. But I know Dr. Lukow has a strong view, and I think a very valuable and important one.
Sure. So to Mr. Greenwood's point, you know, obviously we're biased. We believe that we can provide the best education here in Centennial with our programs, with our teachers, with our supports and resources. And one of the things that we've looked at very closely is just the costs that we, that are associated with sending students out of district for any number of reasons. And I will share with you that, for example, those placements are in excess of $9 million a year that we spent. And our contention is that what if we could reduce that cost and in so doing, create a better environment and better programs? And I do want to say that, that providing, for example, with special education, providing a high-quality in-district program and support for students, it supports inclusion, it supports access, and it supports civil rights for students. And it's aligned with IDEA, it's aligned with Chapter 14. And so that's really important. And we just believe that when needs can be met in our district, our students benefit academically, socially, and emotionally as a result. Students get to come to school in their neighborhood schools. They get to come to school and attend school with their friends, which is very important. Students have access to general ed alongside peers and friends. We have better oversight of our instruction, better oversight of our programs and services. Families have greater access to our support and our staff. There's enhanced family engagement, that, that is a result of that. But I want to be very explicit, when we talk and when we look about these possible placements, there is nothing predetermined. There are no predeterminations. Any decision that we would ever consider make, making about this would be made only in consultation with our families, only in consultation with our families. Parents are full and equal members of the IEP teams and, and must be treated as such. And so that's a critically important thing that I want to state, and I can't emphasize that enough. It's not a wholesale movement. It's just a, a way of thoughtfully reviewing with the belief that we're going to make these decisions based on student need and what's best for our students and our families. And if that means that we can do it in-house, excellent. If it means that it's best that we do it out of district, so be it. We do owe a look on behalf of our families to do that. And then there's a Civil Rights Foundation that, that comes along with that as well. We know that students need to be educated in a least restrictive environment, and we know that that's one of our challenges, an ongoing challenge here in Centennial, where we do have, the percentage of students in a least restricted environment is below the state average. In fact, it's 20 percentage points below. And so one of the things that, that we want to focus on is how can we educate students with disabilities alongside their, their peers? And so strengthening our in-district programs and our supports will allow us to do that. And so it's a big piece, it's a very complex piece. There's a lot to work on and talk about and decisions to be made as a team. But we believe that we can do it better. We can do it in a way that honors our students and families, and we can do it with efficiency.
Great, great. All very good parts, very good ideas. There are exceptions.
Oh, could I say one more? I cut you off, but I forgot one other thing. We put up there, what is that, one, two, three, four, five, six bullets down? Purchasing, and this isn't a huge savings, but it, it goes to the point that if you have as scrutiny as I, every little bit matters. Many times districts are provided blocks of seats at alternative schools. So for example, and I won't use a school because I don't want to misspeak, but let's just say alternative school A says, hey, Centennial, we're going to offer you the chance to purchase 30 seats this year for students, and we'll cut you a discount, let's say hypothetical, we'll give you a 25% discount, okay? So instead of paying $10,000 for a seat, we pay 7,500 for 30 seats. Well, now we're, if we don't fill 30 seats, we just lost money. So rather than take what looks like economically sound math, I would rather we pay $10,000 for three seats at 30 grand as opposed to $300,000, or, or whatever 7,500 times 30 is, 24,000, whatever that, what would that, no. I can't, that's too much math. Instead of paying triple that and then almost being beholden to fill the positions, why don't we just pay as we go and work on our in-district supports? So just another way of looking at it that would still incur a savings of, you know, well over $100,000 a year.
Yep, absolutely.
Well over.
It's a shift in the focus, right?
So it's just another way of thinking about it. Thank you.
Other ideas that, that popped up, right, are, are the, taking the Act I exception, right? So there are exceptions to the Act I for, for a handful of things. You know, special education is really the only one that is relevant to, to Centennial, which allows the district to, to have an increase above the Act I without a referendum, right? Because of that. In PDE, there's a, a process that you need to go through to do that, but that is, that would, could be an option. Transfer of entity, right? To Dr. Lukow's, right, transfer of entity was something that Centennial did, I think, back in '21, I think is when we moved our SPIRIT program that was housed at the IU and supported, and we paid the IU to do it. That was a program that we brought back. And I think we've had tremendous success in bringing it back, and I think our kids have been overwhelmingly the beneficiaries of that return. As you read about in Lori Denny's update, right, I think she has three students today, or two students today, I'm not sure which one it is. I don't know if one graduated from that, that have moved on to have day jobs working in, in our cafeterias, right? Really productive, and it's wonderful to see them. Our good friend Colleen Paris hosts a, a sort of annual Christmas break lunch for the SPIRIT team, and they come in and they make decorations and do a lot of great stuff. And, and the young, the young lady that is working now in the, in the kitchen in our food service group at Davis, you know, proudly says, you know, hello Lori, how are you today, right? It was really a warm and sort of adult-to-adult, which is sort of that goal of that plan, right? View. So when we talk about being able to do things better, I think that, in that case, our, our team of teachers and support aides in that SPIRIT program do a wonderful job. I can't, I'm biased for sure, right? But I can't believe that that's happening anywhere better than it's happening here. The access reporting evaluation. The access reporting evaluation, right, as to Mrs. Lynch's question out of the gate, right? How do we continue to push to make sure we're getting the maximum recovery of funds when we can, right? It takes a lot of work. It is a challenge, right? As, as Dr. Lukow mentioned, right? You need to send three letters to those schools in order to get them on the hook, right? So it is a, it is a process. But I think it's, it's making sure we're, we're pushing and, and taking care of those things. Retirement incentives. We talked about retirement incentives early on. Uh, I think the district back in 2012, perhaps, Mr. Hartline might have a number, uh, we had a more advanced, a more potentially lucrative uh, retirement incentive. The district is very fortunate with our, uh, we, we retain a great deal of our teachers, right? Which is wonderful, which is what it's all about, right? But half of our teachers sit at step 15, right? We have 30 teachers who have been here for, uh, over, just under 30 teachers, uh, just under 30 who have been here 30 or more years, 31 or more years, um, that, that are in play, right? So, you know, I think one concern that we have, when so many teachers are there, they're eventually going to retire, right? And that could be a very difficult year in HR if we had to, to replace them. So how can we strategically look at that and strategically, strategically, uh, find ways to, uh, to, uh, reduce that number, right? When the, the CEA negotiations come on and organizations compare, you know, average comp, right? That's never very, it's not a very good or very honest or clear, um, response, right? Because some of it's based on, on where your teachers lay on the, on the grid, right? And hours, you know, more than half are, are sitting in, in, in one spot, which makes our grid a little lopsided, but it's certainly beneficial to our kids, right? Our kids are getting a great education for that. So it's not about moving that, it's just about trying to create some balance and potentially planning for the future. We continue to look for grants as we always do. We discussed, we had some discussions around advertising, ways we could potentially sell advertising, whether in our stadiums or in our gymnasiums. The planetarium, I think we're still a little ways off on the planetarium, but I love to put the planetarium on slides, um, right? There's some great photographs on the planetarium if you didn't get to see them. We had, uh, we had great lessons two weeks ago, maybe it was just last week, it was just last week, right? That we fired, that we fired up the planetarium, the stars were out, it was fantastic. Half of the kids went in and, and got to gaze at the stars, and the other half of the students went to a classroom to the side and, uh, really gave, got some great science education, which is really neat as they blend our EL, I think the term is, uh, books in, uh, with the science curriculum as well. And, and we're continuing to look at those overtime reductions. Challenges, as, as we talked about, our, our commitments contractually certainly do present a challenge. Placements in general, right? We are challenged in that area. The declining Act One will be a challenge, uh, because it is, it's not in line, sort of doesn't follow inflation, at least at the moment. Uh, that's their projecting today, it's not necessarily their projection in three years from now, but they are pretty consistent and, and pretty good measures of, of what we could expect. A, a bullet point at the bottom is that declining interest in investment income, right? As, as interest rates fall, the, the bonds that the district is able to, uh, to invest in, right? We have a limited investment set of pools. I think we continue to push those options, uh, with our folks at, uh, PSDAF, PISLAF, um, and then, you know, inflationary pressures that Dr. Lukow spoke in the beginning, right? The schools aren't, um, aren't, uh, aren't exempt from those challenges. Our final steps, these, a lot of these things that we've been working on already is reviewing, scheduling, and staffing. Uh, we completed a review of our Policy 126 in class size, I think that comes up in a little discussion later in tonight, um, and then review of what we've been talking about and beginning to lay those out and beginning to do the hard work, uh, that, uh, that will get us through to what we need to, where we need to be. And then the timeline. All right? Any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Sadowski.
Yes, thank you. All right, we're on number four. Approval of the agenda, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 4.1 approves the December 9th, 2025 board agenda as per the attached. Are there any corrections that need to be made that are allowed by PA law?
Second.
Comments? Nothing? All right, all in favor?
There is a comment though. There's, there's one item I think we want to remove from the agenda.
Oh, well, yeah, the consent agenda, yeah, we'll get there. Uh, just for, just for the, uh, approval of the agenda for tonight, though. All good, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Okay, community comments? We have Isabella Catalino come on up. So you'll have three minutes and just, um, just your name and, um, you, your residence, not your, not your house number, just Warmster, Southampton, Ivyland.
Hey, um, I'm Isabella Catalino. I live in Southampton, PA, and I'm a 10th grader at Williamston High School. So I am here regarding the board policy on our GPA calculator at Williamston High School. So recently, I applied for an internship in which I had to submit my GPA. Um, because I'm in high school now, I have a GPA listed on our cumulative, and I'd never really seen that before, so I was interested in my GPA. Um, when I looked, um, my GPA was at 3.9, which was a little confusing to me because previously, when I calculated my GPA, it had been higher. Um, last, like, in my ninth grade year, um, the lowest grade I had was a 99 without the curve, and my GPA was a 3.9 with the curve. So, um, I looked into our GPA calculator and that of surrounding schools in our area and compared them. Our GPA calculator is different than every other schools in our area where they use a more traditional GPA calculator, and we use something non-traditional. So as an example, if I were to score a 95 in an academic class at Williamston, that class would have given me a 3.75 contribution to my GPA. If I were to score a 95 in any other academic class in our area, my GPA would be a 4.0. So let me explain why this is important. Um, as like some, someone like me, when applying for internships that just require your GPA, this makes me look less competitive compared to a student that goes to Lower Moreland, for example. Another, another reason why this is important is because as students are now applying for college, um, the website that we use when applying for college, um, you just put in your GPA. Some schools require your transcript, but the majority just, um, want your GPA. Um, once again, this makes like a student from our school look less competitive than a student from other schools in our area. So my, my recommendation is that we examine our GPA calculator and choose a more traditional calculator that schools such as Lower Moreland, Upper Moreland, Nishamini, and Penridge all use. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Izzy. All right, who are we going to have working on that?
So Dr. Zakken and I will, will start to, to look into this and, and, uh, we will determine what we're doing currently, what that looks like, and, um, Izzy will be, we'll be back in touch, and I think it's going to be a much larger conversation once we have the information.
Thank you. I have information, and I'm willing to sit down for something anytime.
Great.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Nicole Abey. Again, your name and just, um, you know, Southampton, Ivyland, Warmster, not your street.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Nicole Abey, and I live in Southampton, and I have a, I have a daughter who is in eighth grade, and I just wanted to touch on something that she had brought up with me. It's been an ongoing discussion in our household for, for quite some time, but I also want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak. And then she asked me today, when I told her that I was coming to a school board meeting, she asked me to raise this issue on her behalf because it is something that's really important to her and near to dear to her heart. Um, and that is bullying. And I know this is a topic that a lot of parents and a lot of people are concerned about. Um, I'm speaking specifically, she's in middle school, so I'm going to kind of tailor my remarks to that. We often talk about academic achievement and preparing our students for the future, but we cannot overlook the environment in which our students are expected to learn. For too many students, that environment includes fear, harassment, and isolation. Middle school is already a challenging time. Students are growing, changing, and learning who they are. But when bullying becomes a part of their daily reality, it chips away at their confidence, their motivation, and their mental health. Students who are targeted carry the weight of that experience long after the school bell rings, and in some cases, long into adulthood. These impacts are not small. They influence grades, attendance, behavior, and emotional well-being. But bullying doesn't just affect those who are targeted, it affects the culture of the entire school. When bullying becomes normalized, students believe that cruelty is simply how middle school is, and we all fail them. A culture like that discourages kindness, silences bystanders, and teaches students that speaking up will not make a difference. That is not the kind of environment that any of us want for our children. I believe that we can change this culture. I believe our schools can be places where respect is not only encouraged but expected, where students learn not only math and reading, but also empathy, courage, and responsibility. Achieving that requires more than policies written on paper. It requires a shared commitment from teachers, administrators, families, and this board to support practices that build connection, understanding, and trust. We need to ensure that students feel safe coming forward and that the adults in their lives are equipped to respond, and that our school climates reflect the values that we say we stand for. When students know their voices matter, when they see that their school protects them, and when they are taught how to treat others with dignity, real cultural change can begin. Members of this board, we owe it to our students to confront bullying, not only as an inevitable part of growing up, but as a preventable problem that deserves our full attention. Every child deserves to walk into school feeling safe, respected, and valued. That is the foundation of learning, and it must be a priority. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your commitment to creating schools where every child has the chance to thrive. And I also want to say thank you to my daughter for caring about this issue, and that those, those are the impacts, and for trying to use her voice to be the change that she wants to see in the world.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Did you come before us before with that issue?
Uh, I think I touched on it briefly in another comment, yes.
Right.
My, my statement, well, was that I thought, um, Mrs. Abey, Abey?
Abey.
Brought this up one time before at a board meeting. Did any thing come from that? Did you get any results from, after that first discussion?
It was more, it was, I don't think, um, I think it was more just a general topic. I don't think that today was more specifically about that issue that because it's continuing, you know, she comes up and discusses a lot of things that are going on in her day-to-day life and things that are happening, and when I ask her, like, what kind of things are going on, she feels worried about friends that she sees are being targeted, as well as feels fear of retaliation, of speaking out about those issues. Um, and she said, you know, it's, it's everything you just, it's not that the teachers, it happens away from where the students are. So I tried to, like, troubleshoot ideas with her, like, how can we, how, what would you like to see, you know, coming from the school, and how can we help you, and how can we better? Like, I said, you're the one that's here, how can we help you? And, you know, she had some ideas about things, you know, obviously, they're coming from a 13-year-old perspective, but I think it'd be really helpful, you know, to try and, you know, and, and listen to that. I think one of the things she did mention was maybe having more, uh, more aides in, in classes or more people who are going to be kind of plugged in to seeing that that kind of behavior is going on. So she said it's usually the same group of kids who are doing a lot of the, the targeting behavior. And she's like, it's not that it's not known who these kids are, but they also feel like there's no, uh, if it's happening away from teachers or adults who are responsible, there's no consequences. And as a result, you know, she feels, she feels right, and she, I know there's some of her friends who are specifically being targeted and singled out.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Nicole, we'll have someone reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Sadowski.
The consent agenda. Uh, would anyone like anything pulled, or can we go straight through six? I know we had something we wanted to table.
Six point, six point two B, I would like to pull. Give me one second. Safety and security coordinator, I want to vote on, I want to table that.
Pending further.
Pending further information.
Okay. But otherwise, everything else, good to go straight through? Any?
Second on the table.
Okay, can we get a?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Okay. Very good.
So that's going to be table until the next meeting?
Yep, that's table. Uh, anything else anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda for part six? Seeing none, I will go straight through. All right, six point one, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, six point one A, approves the minutes from the November 11th, 2025 work session and regular meeting. Six point one B approves the minutes from the November 25th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Board Meeting. Six point two, personnel, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, six point two A, uh, you know, rescinds, uh, rescinded job offer. Six point two B, other than the table, authorization to employ. Six point two C, leaves of absence. Six point two D, rescindment of leave of absence. Six point two E, change of status. Six point two F, co-curriculars, clubs, and activities. Six point three, exceptions to policy, none. Six point four, appointments, none. Six point five, waivers, none. Six point six, conferences and travel, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, six point six, six A, approves the overnight trip request for the Williamston Competitive Cheerleading Team to compete in the National School Spirit Championship, February 7th, 2026 through February 9th, 2026 in Orlando, Florida. No cost to the district, the Booster Club will be responsible for all costs. Six point seven, bids and quotes, none. Six point eight, assembly speakers and programs, none. Six point nine, contracts, licenses, and services, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, six point nine A, approves the affiliation agreements for student teaching between the Centennial School District and Alverna University, Chestnut Hill University, Eastern University, and Moreland University. No cost to the district. Six point nine B approves retroactively the agreement with Bayata Home Healthcare Incorporated for substitute registered nurses effective November 25th, 2025 through August 31st, 2027. District cost is on an as-needed basis. Six point 10, textbooks, none. Six point 11, acceptance of donations, grants, and bequests, none. Six point 12, changes to academic programs, positions, and stipends, none. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Clean sweep? And move on to new business.
I have another question, sorry.
Oh, yes.
As I'm going back, um, thinking about the minutes, um, from November, um, are, are newbies, are they allowed to vote on approving minutes when they weren't board members at that time?
They, they are. Um, and actually, board members who aren't present at a meeting are also allowed, I think it's been the practice here, to abstain from the minutes.
Okay.
But, um, as long as the board members have, we'll say faith in the board secretary's ability to accurately reflect the minutes of the meeting, um, whether they were present or not, they can vote to approve them. Yeah, thanks.
School directors have regularly been meeting attendees as well.
Oh, I know, I know. I just went to find out what that policy was, but thank you.
Of course. All right. Section seven, new business.
Can I pull 7.1, please?
That's all that's there, so, you know. 7.1.
Yes.
Awards, Solicitor Services to Kilkenny Law, effective beginning of, uh, December 9th, 2025, or as soon as practicable, um, and renewing annually with the Board of School Directors. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. Um, my question is, how many other solicitors have submitted resumes for this, for position?
So just like last year, we, we didn't do that. It wasn't done last year or the year before.
My question is, how many other solicitors have submitted resumes for this, for position?
So, just like last year, we, we didn't do that. It wasn't done last year or the year before, because Kilkeny Firm had already worked for Centennial, just as Jeff's firm did. Last year, we didn't do it, and this year, we didn't do it again.
So why, I, I didn't realize that, or I didn't know until I read the agenda, that we were seeking a new solicitor.
Yes.
And I didn't, I didn't, there was no discussion among us as a team that this was going to happen? And where, so where did this come from?
Well, as the previous years, the last two years, there was no discussion.
Well, I think there needs to be a discussion. Well, the previous two years, we had the same.
We had the same solicitor, but.
Person.
Exactly. But every year, the board can choose to change solicitor. And just like last year, it wasn't a discussion, it just appeared.
Okay.
This year, because the Kilkeny Firm has already been here, had already done the RFP, just like last year, we're just choosing to try a different solicitor.
So was our, our previous solicitor have the same, it says here, renew annually with the board? Did he have that as well, is that wording?
Yes.
So if we're, so if it's reviewed, renewing annually, then why isn't his contract renewed automatically, than, or Mr. Garten's?
It should be voted on every year.
Let me.
That's not the way it says.
Last time we changed solicitors, we put an RFP out for that purpose. That was three years ago.
Yeah, we didn't do that last year.
The last time, we did not vote on any solicitor last year. You know, that was a conclusion that we will keep the solicitor for, you know.
Because it's necessary news annually.
Another RFP would be put out.
Right. So we didn't do an RFP last year.
So why are we doing it this year?
We're not doing an RFP this year. We're taking somebody who has already been a solicitor for the district, just as we did last year with the solicitor.
So, but we're having someone seeking the position, I didn't know the position was open.
It, it's open every year.
No, it's not.
It is. Every year, you can change a solicitor.
You did not vote on that last year, or the year before.
You can change every year your solicitor.
Three years ago, you put an RFP out for all law firms to.
There was no RFP last year.
So can we table this, then? Because there's not, I think some questions need to be answered?
No.
No, to table it?
If we get a second to table it, we can table it.
Yeah, you can do it, and we'll vote on tabling it, of course.
Okay.
But this wasn't, this isn't something new. This was not done last year or the year before.
Right. So I'm, this is my second year, and I was, it was not done last year after my first year. So all of a sudden, this is brought here, and I wasn't aware of this, and it wasn't brought up that we were going to discuss this.
And you got the board agenda.
That was Friday.
So that made you aware.
Friday, or yes, Tuesday. But it wasn't discussed as a group, or even in an executive session, that, oh, we're going to change solicitors.
Right. As it wasn't last year or the year before. There was no discussion. It was just a.
Okay, but we had the same person.
Exactly.
We're changing that person.
That's exactly right.
I don't care. Patty, I'm sorry, I don't care whether he was here before or not.
Right.
I know he was. No disrespect, sir. But this was not something in my two years that this was ever brought up. And so now, all of a sudden, we're faced with this, like, I'm saying, where did this come from?
You can make a motion to table it, and then we vote on it.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we table this for further discussion.
I would second that.
I actually have more discussion prior to voting on the table that may add to the tabling, or not.
You're not allowed to.
Yeah. Stuck.
Alvin, I have a question once this vote is over.
Sure. Can we do a roll call for the tabling? Mr. Godikson.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch. Mr. Sadowski. Oh, okay. Mrs. DiPaolo.
No.
Mrs. Crossen.
No.
Dr. McGuire.
Yes, to table it?
Mrs. DiPaolo. I got you already, I'm sorry. Mrs. Krieger.
No.
I printed the wrong one.
Missing me?
Oh, Mr. Hartline, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. So the motion to table fails, four to five.
More comments?
Yeah, I have more comments. We don't have a copy of the contract to review, so we're being asked to vote on something that we don't have a contract to review.
We sent to everybody, it's the same, it was the same pricing as.
That doesn't, no, that, that's not the contract. The contract would enumerate things like number of, minimum number of hours, the scope that's going to be done, those types of things. We don't have, I mean, no offense, coming from a lawyer, we don't have a contract, okay? I mean, so that's my big concern here, is that we don't have a contract to review, so we're being asked to vote on something that is contractual without having a contract.
And what does renewing annually, so next year, we're not going to have this vote?
No, you would.
Well.
I mean, it's, in 2022, which was the last time that it was done, there was an RFP put out, there were six or seven for it. Going back, seeing that, you know, I can't yell to Mrs. Lynch right now. Previously, in my previous, you know, multiple times that we have done RFPs, or professional contracts, we've put out RFPs for attorneys regularly, including special education, and, you know, legal or real estate, et cetera. I mean, we have several attorneys of record. You know, Mr. Martin even mentioned last meeting regarding wanting to put an RFP out or a proposal out for our family consumer science, even though we have an engineer of record.
Right.
So, you know, I would think, you know, for the best for the district, in my opinion, would be an RFP, not just a blind solicitation from an individual asking to be changed. And additionally, a contract.
Right. So the contract, the, the pricing was the same as the previous solicitor.
Pricing isn't the only thing in a contract.
I got you, I got you on that one. So it's the same pricing, however, if, if this was still going to be Jeff as our solicitor, we wouldn't be having this discussion. It's any change, and Kilkeny Firm has already represented us before. So if I were to say, oh, we're going to stay with Jeff, there would have been no discussion, even though there should be. So I get that you, you will have the contract, it's the same pricing, just we're going to move forward with a vote.
Where did this come from? When, no, I, did anybody else have a, a chance to offer for this position? That's what I'm saying. Or did this, where did, is Mr. Kilkeny's name come from?
Right, from our previous solicitor. We just took the same, the solicitor we had before Jeff, that was Kilkeny Firm. That's why we're moving forward with that.
Is this just a position that's being bought by the law firm?
No. Absolutely not.
Seems to appear that, you know, since we have no other law firms involved, and given the chance to.
So last year at this time, when we did the reorg, I don't remember anybody saying, well, I think we need to do an RFP.
But there was no planning of changing the solicitor.
There was no plan.
So we should have done an RFP.
There was no vote for any.
There was no discussion either.
Changing solicitors and RFP seems to be what would be in the best interest of the town.
And we did have an RFP the year before Jeff was here.
In 2022, which was the last time a solicitor was changed.
Right.
Right. So when you're going to change a solicitor, like if we were going to change our engineer of record, we would go out and entertain bids to see what competitive market might bring. Who knows? There may be another law firm out there that would come in lower, that has as much of experience. We don't know, because we've not afforded that opportunity.
Right. And, and I, I hear what you're saying, but you're not listening. You didn't, you didn't decide that maybe we could get somebody cheaper last year?
No, but we renewed the, we renewed the existing individual, we're not changing.
That is what we're doing again.
No, but we are changing.
He wasn't.
No, we are changing.
No, that was so many years ago.
Right.
He wasn't here last year.
He was the solicitor before Jeff.
No, that doesn't matter, it's just starting a whole new term. You know, this is not, I know he's been here before, but.
Exactly.
Okay, so now he wants to come back. How about the people who was, who were before him? Do they want to come back, too? Do they get the same opportunity?
Jeff, Jeff has been here for many years.
Well, no, because we had Michael Levin's Law Group prior to that, he might be interested in it as well.
The thing is, why, why do we give it to somebody from three times ago, then?
It's a board decision, and you get a chance to say yes or no.
No, I don't really find that this is a board decision. I think this was a predetermined question, decision, and I think that, I, that it's being thrown at us without a contract, without any other information, so, oh, he's been with us before. Well, no, that doesn't, like, okay, I'm going to hire you as a teacher, because you used to be here before, from a person who was asked to leave the district. But that's okay if you touched kids before, you can come back. That's the way, you know what? It's, I'm not saying that you did that, sir, I'm just saying, it's okay to come back. No, we need an RFP, just like we did before, or something.
We did not do that last year.
No.
Every year, there should be a decision made, but that was bypassed.
There was no change, there was no vote.
Right, there was no discussion either.
The last two years.
We're talking in circles, so.
We are. You, you, okay, so.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
A little different tack, but I have a comment, although I agree with some of the above. Number one, if we're going to do this, the fee should be added to the resolution, because as it reads, it's open-ended, and nobody has any idea what the fee actually is. Certainly, the general public doesn't. It should be added to the resolution of the hourly fee and what it's going to be, number one.
Yes.
Number two, probably there should have been a contract, but we don't have it. Number three, you have five votes, it's going to happen, so postponing it doesn't do much for us. But four, my, my other concern is, I actually received from Mr. Kilkeny, the list of all his solicitors who worked for his firm, of which there's 14 or 15 that I saw. I actually took the time to read and through all the resumes that were, that were submitted, including the work history of those particular attorneys, I'm sure all of whom are very competent attorneys. However, I found that out of all the ones that were submitted, only one of all those attorneys had listed any kind of school experience with the Wissahican School District. None of the others, although they had municipal and this and that, there's a big difference between townships, counties, and school districts. A huge difference in the law to, in what regulates the two. So there was one person, and, and on those lists, that cited school experience. That same person also cited being conflict counsel for Centennial School District. I don't recall a contract to that extent, and I don't think we have a contract to that extent, to my knowledge. I could be wrong. I don't think there's an existing contract for conflict counsel with that particular individual. However, he's the only one that listed school experience. There was a person named in the information we got from Mr. Kilkeny, who is going to be his assistant liaison, whatever title you want to put to it, who had listed absolutely no school experience whatsoever. I think we're giving up Mr. Garten, who has devoted his basic career to school matters, and getting someone who, I know Mr. Kilkeny is very busy being sheriff and all the other things he does. This person we're going to get may have school experience, but it's not listed, and we should receive what their school experience has been, in my opinion.
Good point.
Otherwise, I can count, postponing it isn't going to do much for us, but they're my comments regarding that situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Rich, can you do a roll call, please?
Can I make a comment, or have a question? Mrs. Crossen?
Yes.
Karen and I are new, so the question is, when we do something like this, is there normally a procedure?
No, last year, there was none.
Okay. Just curious.
However, in the past, there have been situations where we have, when we changed counsel, gone to an RFP, request for proposal, or an RFP, or request for a bid.
We've seen that before through the Kilkeny Firm, because they were our solicitor before.
And when that occurred, we told the respect, and Mrs. Crossen, that was in the year 2000, and we had a big argument then about whether there should be.
Did.
Proposals for solicitors.
Any changes.
And that wasn't done at that time. In 2002, I actually became president that year, we did solicit proposals for.
Yes.
Solicitor in 2002. We haven't done it since.
Yeah. Any change is going to cause any kind of controversy. Can we do a roll call, please, Mrs. Rich? Mrs. DiPaolo.
Can you just state what we're voting on? I'm just not 100% sure.
We're voting on Kilkeny Firm, being our solicitor.
Do we add the fee amount of the NIP that you hear?
Yes, yes, we will. It was, it was, it was, yeah, 155 an hour, yes. So that's going to be added to it, Kilkeny Firm, for 155 an hour.
That, we need a, a motion to do that, to change the.
Motion to revise. There you go. Second.
And we need a vote on the motion to revise.
All right, so this is just the motion to add the 155 an hour to seven point one new business.
Can we do a roll call, please?
Mrs. DiPaolo.
Yes.
And this is the motion to revise, to revise the motion.
The vote is yes, thank you.
Mrs. Lynch.
Yes.
Mr. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger.
Yes.
Mrs. Crossen.
Yes.
Dr. McGuire.
No.
Mr. Hartline.
No.
Mr. Godikson.
No.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
So the motion to revise, the motion is, passes six, three. Okay, so now can we do a roll call to have Kilkeny Firm be our solicitor? Mrs. Lynch.
Yes.
Mr. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. DiPaolo.
Yes.
Mrs. Crossen.
Yes.
Dr. McGuire.
No.
Mrs. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Godikson.
No.
Mr. Hartline.
No.
And Mr. Martin.
No.
Motion passes five, four.
That is all for new business.
All right. Policies. Take on policies, because we haven't handed that out yet. Policies presented for initial distribution discussion. Does anybody want to discuss anything before we, it's not for, anybody want to discuss any of the policies? Anything for adoption? Anybody want to discuss anything? Okay. Eight point one, policies presented for initial distribution discussion, eight point one A, policy 102, academic standards. Eight point one B, policy 105, curriculum. Eight one, eight point one C, policy 111, lesson plans. Eight point one D, policy 126, class size. Eight point two, policies presented for adoption, be it resolved that the Centennial School 8.2 Policies Presented for Adoption, Be It Resolved at the Centennial School Board, School Directors, 8.2A Adopt Policy 209.2 Diabetes Management, 8.2B Policy 333 Professional Development, 8.2C Policy 626 Federal Fiscal Compliance, 8.2D Policy 6.61 Travel Reimbursement Federal Programs, 8.2E Policy 827 Conflict of Interest, 8.2F Policy 918 Title I Parent and Family Engagement.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any nays? Looks like it went through. All right. So 9.1 Financials, Mr. Hartline.
All right, does anybody wish to have any of the four items pulled for discussion? Seeing none, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves the schedule of bills, investment cafeteria fund reports, general fund cash receipts summary November 2025 as per the attached. 9.2 Approves the 2025 Budget Transfers for November as per the attached. 9.3 Approves the Pending Bill List as per the attached. 9.4 Accepts the Pre-approved Bill List as per the attached.
Second.
So I will give that one to Mr. Sadowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion passes 9-0-0. Janie, you voted yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, board discussions and comments?
Do you have one thing? I was president pro tem at the last meeting. We did have two individuals who abstained for votes. I'm going to remind them that they need to put in paperwork stating their abstention per the school code. My job as president is done then.
I'll check with our lawyer and confirm it.
So Colleen, you have to send that to me.
Yeah, as Alexis mentioned earlier in her report, the Breakfast with Santa recently happened, the Future Business Leaders Association of America did a wonderful job organizing that. It's a great job by our students who did a lot of work on that event. It was a lot of fun. Patty and I stopped by. And earlier, the Huff Planetarium was mentioned, and that's an effort that's been underway for a little while now. I know Dr. Gabriel was a champion of that restoration while he was here. You know, Dr. Herman and Mr. Rutz are very much involved in continuing that project in his stead. Students are going to benefit, already are benefiting greatly, from this truly unique asset in Centennial being up and running again, and I am very excited to see it active and educating again. We watched a, quite a while of a movie on holiday traditions while we were there at the holiday event, and it was just really, really cool to be in that space and learning again, so I'm excited to have that going.
Do you have something to add? Check your school calendars all week long. We have concerts, holiday events, high school is Thursday night, lots going on in the district. Support your students. And I will say, I got a brief, I was fortunate enough to go to the Philharmonic, the Warmenster Symphony last Saturday, got a brief preview of our magicals and the other singers, absolutely incredible, well worth the time to see them.
Yes, and to piggyback off Mr. Hartline, the symphony was wonderful. It was at Tenet, first of all, they always do a good job, and then Tenet really, really, you could just see how they shined. It was amazing watching, watching them come together, and the young man with the violin, what was his name?
Uh, Yen.
Fantastic.
David Yen, I think it was.
Absolutely fantastic. It was, it was a wonderful evening.
And I will say, and even, even the maestro was able to get the entire audience to sing at the very end of the, of the performance, so it was an outstanding show. They always do. And to plug them real quick, they are having a fundraiser event. Go to their website, tickets are available. I believe the event is in the middle of January.
Speaking of the performers, I'd be remiss, as a member of the Craven Hall Historic Society Board, if I didn't mention the Holiday Open House this Sunday from noon to 4:00, where we will have a Holiday Chorus William Tenet Singers performing as well around 2:00 PM. So stop by and see them, they are always fantastic.
Can I just have an, I just have an opinion, and I have to say this before I leave, that I just, I still feel like I had the wool pile over my head, and all of us, and that, sir, you've been, Mr. Kill Kenny, you've been sitting here since the beginning of this meeting, and you, and I don't know you from Adam, and you did not take an action of introducing yourself to myself. You probably know the other people, but you could have done that and made yourself a little bit more present. Words mean nothing on a piece of paper of a resume, but you could have taken that time to have done that. And, you know, again, that's just a personal issue, and I'm going to ask that Dr. Luca Baal look into whether this is a violation, the way this was pulled over, and Mike to look if this was an ethical proceeding as well, please. Okay.
Okay, district policy report. I don't believe we have anybody right now for that. And Beast, the Bucks County Intermediate Unit 22.
I guess I will still do that, still being there. The last board meeting at DIU was on November 18th. Some of the pieces that were presented there was the highlight of year-round effort to ensure educational stability for students that's facing homelessness. The BCIU supports school districts in Bucks, Delaware, Lehigh, Montgomery, and North Hampton Counties. On another note before that, because this happened before, we had a state budget, Dr. Hoffmann together with Andrew Duster, Superintendent in Morrisville, and the superintendent from Craigertown, Matthew Friedman, and 40 other educational leaders presented, you know, a briefing to the state legislators and, you know, to solve the budget and the impact that, you know, it is not having one, and of course, we got a state budget a few days later. On assistive technology, DIU helps students learn first and contribute. This is helping students with complex communications, finding their voice in the Bucks County classrooms. On the social media piece, DIU had 378,000 views, 3,600 followers on Facebook. On Instagram, they had 93,700 views, but only 784 followers. On LinkedIn, on 39,000 views with 4,329 followers. This is an increase on their social media components of 21%. The IU also delivers professional learning opportunities for non-public school educators, and on behalf of the school districts in the county, particularly on Title 2A, the funding for professional learning and equity participation funding, short EP, for students with already identified disabilities. They serve as many as 36 non-public school sources, providing highly qualified support that aligns with the state and federal guidelines. Lastly, the next IU board meeting is not, not until January 20th. And lastly, the IU had a breakfast networking activity at the Fab Lab, which is right here in Warmenster, and had a fully sold-out STEAM program that was provided by the Delaware Valley Industrial Resource Center, and we're going to have a meeting with them on the 16th. And that's it for the IU.
All right. PSBA, so New School Director Monthly Meetups. As your board welcomes newly elected school directors this fall, encourage them to attend New Director Monthly Meetups in the new year. Offered each month from January to June, directors can connect with colleagues, learn about, support, PSBA provides to our members, and ask questions of veteran school board directors during these hour-long virtual meetings designed to foster new board director success. Learn more at mypsba.org. You guys take notes on that? All right. CEF, do you have anything, Mr. Hartline, or do you?
So I'm not going to mention the name because I think we're going to be doing a big check presentation, but the CEF received a $40,000 grant today.
Yay!
So I don't want to mention names, but that is a substantial amount that is absolutely fantastic.
Yeah. Legislative Council?
All right, so the House and the Senate are on break until next Monday. They will be in briefly prior to, I guess, adjourning for the year, then coming back after the first of the year. There is not a whole lot happening. There was some in our weekly board report, some of the stuff that we had talked about last month that I had brought up was signed by the governor, and the district is in the process of fulfilling their obligations under those new laws. I think there were four, I'm looking over to the side for guidance, I think there were four of them. We had enumerated them previously. So right now, things are just passing back and forth from committees. There's really not a lot that, I just checked the docket for final vote, that it seems like it's going to be coming up before the end of the year, mostly seems to be procedural stuff. So if anything earth-shaking takes place, I will send an email out, but don't expect it before the first of the year.
All right. MBIT?
Maybe I should take that one, too. The MBIT had an incredible open house on November 6th. It was, you know, completely filled, people were parking out in the grass and all over the place. Also, before the open house, all the board members from the four sending school districts were invited, there was a few there, and it was a very, very informative presentation done by Dr. Corvall. MBIT got a huge grant as well of donation, you know, from a car dealership. I'm not allowed to mention the car dealership yet, but it was a sizable amount of money. We had our last, you know, meeting yesterday, and we had four new board members at the meeting, one from Council Rock, one from Center Bucks, two from Centennial, one missing. But, you know, we have two new board members participating from Centennial. We have five people going out to make presentations at a national conference, four CTEs, three staff members, and two administration people. We also are ready with a new walk-in refrigerator and freezer. It's, there's going to be a ceremony for the dedication of this opening. Enrollment and applications for MBIT has also started, it began on November 6th, you know, the day of the open house. We should have students apply as soon as possible because there is going to be a crowd there. There are close to 1,000 students there now, and all the programs have been full for the last couple of years, so there could be a waiting list to get in. And lastly, we had to be worried because we could lose one of the board seats at MBIT because it's based on the number of students attending.
Thank you.
And the next meeting is in January, the first Tuesday in January, I can't remember the date, 6th. 6th, okay.
All right, additional communications? All right, and additional public comments by residents, anybody? Okay, and Mr. Hartline, schedule of.
All right, students, listen up, this is what you want to hear. Tuesday, December 23rd, early dismissal, grades K through 12, virtual in-service. December 23rd through January 5th, all schools and offices closed. Tuesday, January 6th, 5:30 PM, MBIT Executive Council, MBIT. Tuesday, January 13th, 7:00 PM, Centennial School Board Meeting, Work Session, regular school board, or regular meeting in this boardroom. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.